Good afternoon. I'd like to call the July 6, 2023 council meeting to order. Do we have any special intentions?
Yes, on July 11th, this coming up next week, I'd like to wish my wife Linda a happy anniversary. We will be married forty-two years come next week.
I've never noticed the halo above her head, so it all makes sense now. I'd like to ask Father Luis Rodriguez, the pastor at Divine Mercy Parish, to please lead us in a prayer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you all. Let us bow our heads. Good and gracious God, as we are about to conclude this day and but we're about to conclude it with this council meeting, we ask that you pour upon us, Almighty God, your Holy Spirit, your Holy Spirit of wisdom, of knowledge and understanding. We ask that your Holy Spirit inspire us and lead us through all these deliberations that will be discussed, all these conversations, all the sharings, all the issues that will be at hand. Move us, move our hearts and our minds and our spirits to always carry out your holy will. Because you know what's best for Kenner, you know what's best for each and every one of us and for our families. Bless us always, protect us and keep us safe from all harm. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Father. Vice Chair LaHatt, would you lead us in the pledge?
I'll lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. You have a quorum, in accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Under correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO or department heads, at the request of the administration and police chief and executive session regarding the following, Danks versus Philip Grayson et al., case number 2:21-CV-1806. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan to remove this item at the request of the police chief. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Mayor Glazer?
Thank you, and I'll begin by thanking each and every one of you all for being a very easy council to work with this first year in office. So with that said, we don't always have the same ideas, but easy to work with. With that said, kind of the same thing, the Department of Communications has compiled a video of some of our accomplishments in the first year, and it should be on our website and released maybe by tomorrow. I won't be at the next council meeting. I'll be with the Jefferson Chamber of Commerce in Austin, Texas, for an inner-city visit to compare how this local government with the Travis County government in Austin, Texas, and kind of compare some notes, see how they do it, you know, maybe get some ideas, they want to know how we do it here. It was very successful last year when the Jefferson Chamber went to Nashville, Tennessee, and did the same thing. So I'll be returning late that Thursday when you have a council meeting, or Friday, whatever day it is. And I was handed a late-night laser flyer in our planetarium every Friday in July, the 7th, 14th, 21st and 28th. If you like music and loud flashing lights, this is something for you. Some of the bands, it's Journey, Led Zeppelin, Kiss, U2, Van Halen, Rush, Grateful Dead, Metallica, Pink Floyd, Queen, Pink Floyd, and if I could read the last one, I wouldn't need glasses. And I still have no idea what it is. Foo Fighters. There you go. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to thank the Kiwanis Club of North Kenner. Tomorrow, we will be cutting the ribbon on our little library in the front of the MLK Center. It has been there, but we had not cut the ribbon. So tomorrow for two o'clock, we will be cutting the ribbon for our little library. And right now, I just want to thank them for doing this for our community.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Do we have any resolutions, motions or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of June 1, 2023. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number 2332-23, Community Church to Hold a Public Gathering on August 5, 2023, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. For the purpose of Community Outreach Summit at Susan Park Gymnasium, 502 Veterans Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three B is application number 2342-23, the City of Kenner to Hold a Public Gathering on July 8, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. For the purpose of a community reunion at Bessie Hammond Park, 600 Salvador Road in Kenner, Louisiana. That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKennie. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage. We have none. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item ten is opening of bids. We have none. Item eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item twelve is other ordinances for final passage. Item twelve A is summary ordinance number 13,311, and ordinance amending ordinance number 10,878, to adjust the amount dedicated to subdivision signs. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wilmot?
I was just hoping for an explanation on this one.
So this is legislation that I put forward. Subdivisions that have an active homeowner association in the past have been able to get funds from district funds for signage and improvements to their entryways. Part of it is that they have to be an active association and register with the Secretary of State, and they maintain the subdivision, that area going forward. Due to the amount of money that we are getting less of this year because of the budgets and things, this is just to lower that amount from the fifteen thousand to seventy-five hundred that they can tap into?
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Councilman LaHatt?
Okay, a couple of things. Seventy, it says five thousand.
Five thousand, pardon me, I'll say it correctly.
Okay, and is this prospective application only going forward? Because I have an ongoing project right now with the Palm Vista Garden Club. It's more than this. So if we approve this today, it's not going to affect any prior agreements we've already done.
I'm pretty sure that one's in the works, right? So like the work's being done for that one, for yours?
It's being done right now.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and it's already approved through budget and everything.
Yeah, you already did the form and all that, so.
Yes, I've done this with Driftwood, and that was more expensive than Palm Vista. But I understand based on the lessening of the council manic funds. But we have the approval or not to sign the form to give the money to the associations.
Yes, so the legal department sends out the paperwork for them, giving them all the parameters, if you will. Again, if it's not an active homeowner association, they're not eligible for it?
Yeah, Palm Vista actually had to incorporate to comply with it. Do you, I mean, I'd be more comfortable just cutting it in half, going to seventy-five hundred. Because it has, I've used it twice, and it's been, I mean, the public likes it. I mean, it's, associations liked it, it really did, and a better view to the neighborhoods, which I think Kenner needs.
If you'd like to amend it, amend it?
I'd like to amend it to seventy-five hundred if that's possible at this point.
I have a motion by Councilmember LaHatt. Do I have a second to his amendment to amend it to seventy-five hundred, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot? Any discussion on the amendment as proposed by Councilmember LaHatt?
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes, the way I understand this is, the way it's set up right now, it's a dollar amount that can be used for a subdivision. But if we go to five thousand and we want to spend more of our capital money on that, does this limit us to spending seventy-five hundred if it's at five thousand? I mean, is this saying, if we go to five thousand or seventy-five hundred, does that mean that if we decide to upgrade an entrance to a subdivision and it's fifteen thousand, can we still spend fifteen thousand?
My understanding would be no. So this ordinance is what allows you to spend that capital money on subdivision signs. So if you reduce that, you are capped at that amount.
That's what, we spent thirteen on Driftwood, so I agree with what you're talking about. That's why I think five thousand's too low.
Well, the other thing too is, I don't think that we should be obligated every year to be able to pay fifteen thousand or seventy-five hundred to a subdivision to upgrade an entrance that has been already taken care of.
Yeah, they would apply, and my understanding is the council would, the council person would either have to approve or deny spending their capital funds. This would, this just allows it because your dedicated capital funds are supposed to go for infrastructure or capital improvements. And it's questionable if, you know, flower beds and signs would fit. So this ordinance allows you to do that with the subdivision signs, but you would still need to approve it.
But under the current deal, we would have to approve the a dollar amount. And we can approve up to fifteen thousand?
Yes, because, I mean, if we don't have the money, if you don't have the council funds, then we don't have the money.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not, it comes from the council.
If all of the entrances are nice already, I don't think that we should be, that we should have to do this every year to a civic association. I mean, I'd rather go fix street panels than just give away, you know, money. Is that, am I on the right page here?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
We have to approve it, so it's not, they don't automatically get it if they apply. We have to sign the form.
Okay.
That's my, I've gone through this with legal twice.
I believe Mr. Munz here. I know he's familiar with it. Ms. Dufresne, can you weigh in on that? I don't know how familiar you are with this.
Yes, this one Eric's been working on. This has been his project.
Yeah, Councilman Brannigan, you're not obligated to spend any money every year. It just allows you to go up to fifteen. So I would say the majority of them never get there. It's only if y'all approve that amount, and I've only seen, only one subdivision comes to mind who routinely spends that amount. But for the most part, you know, I've only seen maybe once or twice they come up, and it's usually around the five to ten thousand dollar mark. So, but you're not on the hook to spend that much each year. You're just allowed to spend that much each fiscal, each fiscal year. So does that answer your question?
But it's not obligating, this, it does not obligate us to have to give a civic association fifteen thousand dollars a year?
No, it doesn't obligate you to do anything. It just allows you to, currently you're allowed to spend up to fifteen. This would reduce that to five.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Mr. Munz, as far as the, if it's amended to seventy-five hundred, the seventy-five hundred would be the new cap that a council person can spend on a subdivision sign. Is that correct?
Yes.
What happens if it's multiple council persons?
Yes.
Still seventy-five hundred with this amendment?
Well.
Yes.
It would still, it's in your district, so I don't believe, so you're saying like District One and Two would team up to help somebody in District Two?
And at large, in a district council person?
Yeah, it's, it reads per subdivision slash neighborhood.
So it's, yeah.
Yeah, so you'd be capped at that per subdivision sign.
Okay.
I want to ask the question also.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, because in my district, I have three subdivisions.
Each one would be allowed to apply for up to five thousand or seventy-five hundred, or currently it's fifteen thousand. But whatever you got change it to would be, each one would be able to apply.
If, but I heard him use the language of homeowner's association. That's different from the civic association.
Well, they can call themselves whatever they want to. They just have to be registered as an entity with the Secretary of State. So, yeah, whether they're called the Civic Association or Homeowners Association, as long as they're a registered entity, they would qualify.
That's why I don't want to go into those.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Munz.
No more discussion on the amendment?
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I don't know if Councilman LaHatt would be willing, but I would ask that he withdraw his amendment, and I would like to amend it to make it to a ten thousand dollar threshold.
So the amendment on the floor right now is motion by Councilmember LaHatt, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to amend it to ten thousand dollars. Any discussion on this amendment, as the clerk has announced? Seeing none? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman McKennie?
Yes, I guess my clarification is, is that it's still, regardless of what the limit is, if someone asks or if someone requests any, or a subdivision requests, you know, something for ten thousand or twelve thousand dollars, the council person can still reject that and say, you only have, like, oh, I want to spend, I want to get a really bougie one, and I want twenty thousand. Well, I don't think that's nice. You can say ten thousand, right? So I mean, we still have, us still have the discretion to decide regardless of what this limit is, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's my.
Madam Clerk?
All councilmembers in favor, we're voting on the amendment as changing it to ten thousand. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero to amend it. On the motion as amended, is there any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item twelve B is summary ordinance number 13,312, an ordinance repealing resolution number B-17293, adopted October 6, 2022, in implementing requirements for the approval of the settlement of lawsuits against the City of Kenner. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan.
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to go ahead and open with this and just mention, I had some legislation in the past, withdrew it, and then that came back in with this legislation. This legislation came to my attention. Jefferson Parish had something similar that I was working on. So we kind of did a mirror image of what we could to apply to Kenner from the Jefferson Parish ordinance. This one is slightly different, but nonetheless, it's very similar. And twenty-five thousand dollars, when there's a settlement of twenty-five thousand dollars or less, it's going to be handled in a particular way, shows accountability. First off, if it's under, right now, we don't have such a rule dealing with instances where if it's under twenty-five thousand, it's got to get approval by certain people in administration, that being the city attorney, the mayor and the finance director. That way, there is accountability. Also, anything above that, it's got to be approved by the council. And again, this is an ordinance. It's not in a resolution, so it's mandated. And it removes the previous resolution that we had. And all settlements must be notified to the council within this legislation. And that's what it does. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Councilwoman LaHatt?
No, no, I was just scratching. I saw sparks.
Councilman Brannigan?
No, I'm good.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Please clarify, who was the nay? I'm sorry. Thank you. Motion passes six one. Councilmember LaHatt is opposed.
No, ma'am.
You two?
Yes.
Motion passes five two. Councilmembers LaHatt and Brennan are opposed. Item thirteen is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item thirteen A is a resolution authorized on a settlement in the lawsuit entitled Danks versus Philip Grayson et al., case number 2:21-CV-1806. I have a motion by Councilmember LaHatt, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to remove this item from the agenda. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda. I have none. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number 13,300, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from All-Star Electric Incorporated to provide emergency repair of traffic signal systems post-disaster on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 23-6769 in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. I have a motion by Councilmember McKennie, seconded by Councilmember LaHatt. Any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number 13,301, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Risk Tree Service LLC to provide emergency tree work post-disaster on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 23-6770 in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember McKennie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number 13,302, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Compliance Environment and Viro Systems LLC to provide emergency cleaning and flushing of subsurface drain lines and drainage structures post-disaster on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 23-6774 in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number 13,303, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Ace Garage Door Company LLC to furnish and install one overhead rolling steel service door at the Punch Train Convention and Civic Center, 4545 Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, in accordance with sealed bid 23-6734 in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember LaHatt. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number 13,304, an ordinance approving amendment number four to the agreement with DOM Development Corporation for miscellaneous carpentry work, labor only, increasing the agreement amount by a hundred thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Is there any discussion on this item?
I do.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, I want to know, is this a reimbursement? Because.
Repeat that, please?
Is it a reimbursement? It's increasing, I know, but is this a FEMA reimbursement?
Some of it will be. Over here, Ms. Dunn.
Oh, sorry.
The reason we're raising the cap again is we did not see how much damage we had in city facilities, citywide. On top of the Ida repairs, this is also a normal maintenance contract that he does, regular, everyday-to-day items that come up too. So it's both. This is just to increase it to cover bills that we have from April until the end of June. And the FEMA ones, the ones for Ida, are reimbursable.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. Glorioso. Mr. Morella?
Yeah, I was just going to ask with the, well, Al Morella, 4260 East, drive fifth district, fifty-one years. I was just going to ask with the, to get an explanation on this increase. But Mark came up here and gave the explanation. But let me ask you this, Councilman Brennan. Y'all supposed to open the floor for public comment when y'all get on these audiences? Isn't this supposed to be for public comment?
If someone's standing at the podium, they're welcome to speak.
Okay, but I mean, I thought y'all were supposed to put a motion to open it up for public comment and then get a second and open the floor for public comment.
That's for public hearings.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number 13,305, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from DOM Development Corporation to provide carpentry services, labor only, in accordance with sealed bid number 23-6773 in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember LaHatt. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, sorry.
Councilwoman McKennie?
Yes, I just want to clarify, this is for, this contract is for the future, for the upcoming business year, right?
Yes, correct. It's a new contract from July 1st this year to July of next year.
Okay, and this is, this doesn't include, is, are the majority of, I'm going to say that, are the majority of the costs planned or regular maintenance?
Yes, this is a regular maintenance contract. As you know, y'all approved the contract about two months ago for hurricane-related damages moving forward. So we have two separate ones in place now.
Okay, perfect, great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Glorioso. Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number 13,306, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from. ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Phi Alpha Contract Solutions to furnish four twenty-foot storage containers in accordance with letter bid number twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-eight, in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by council member Lahat, seconded by council member Sharwood. Seeing no discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three hundred and seven, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Bayou State to supply lighting and electrical supplies for Rivertown, in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven seventy-five, in the amount of thirty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by council member Sharwood, seconded by council member Dunn. Any discussion? Seeing none, council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three hundred and eight, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Carlo Ditta LLC to supply ready-mixed concrete as needed in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven sixty-eight, in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. I have a motion by council member Dunn, seconded by council member Wilmot. Seeing no discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three hundred and nine, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Checo Matic Incorporated to supply printed envelopes as needed citywide, in accordance with letter bid number twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-seven, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Finance. I have a motion by council member Brennan, seconded by council member Branigan.
Councilman Branigan?
Uh, the only thing I wanted to say, looking at the bids that came in, we definitely got a good deal at seventy-five bucks a box. When you look at the other four bids, they were two oh four, two fifteen, three forty-one, and three eighty-three for the same type of envelope, so we definitely got a good deal on this. Thank you, Ms. Finance.
Thank you, councilman. Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three hundred and ten, an ordinance approving an agreement with Capital City Press LLC for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four recruiting campaign, in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by council member Brennan, seconded by council member McKenney. Any discussion? Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of software and equipment from Telview Corporation, a sole-source provider, in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand nine hundred and one dollars. Item sixteen B is an ordinance approving a renewal, number one, to the agreement with Jay Chen's Plumbing Repairs LLC for plumbing services, labor only, extending the agreement one year, and increasing the agreement amount by a hundred thousand dollars for a total not-to-exceed amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from S and R Louisiana LLC doing business as Precision Door Service to furnish and install one overhead steel garage door at Fire Station Thirty-Eight, Three Twenty-Five Duke Street in Kenner, Louisiana, in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty-eighty-one, in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Veterans Construction LLC to furnish and install flooring at the Council on Aging Building, six forty-one Compromise Street, Kenner, Louisiana, in accordance with sealed bid twenty-three dash sixty-seven seventy-eight, in the amount of forty-four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen E is an ordinance amending chapter fifteen, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article Two, Section fifteen dash eighteen of the Kenner Code of City Code of Ordinances. Item sixteen F is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office Contract slash Bid Number twenty-three dash May dash seventeen oh one, with the mark Ford Incorporated and Courtesy Ford, to purchase vehicles on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars for the life of the agreements. Item sixteen G is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Superior Traffic Control LLC to provide guard rail maintenance in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven seventy-nine, in an amount not to exceed, please note, this is seventy-five thousand dollars, not five thousand dollars, annually for the Department of Field Services. That was a typographical error. Item seventeen is reports from the council and/or special committees. We have none. Item eighteen is new business. Item eighteen A, at the request of the legal department, a public announcement that the Kenner City Council intends to vote on a resolution to authorize the calling of an election for the levy and collection of a special tax in the city of Kenner at the council meeting to be held on Thursday, August third, two thousand twenty-three. The public notice will read, "The November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three election. The Kenner City Council intends to vote on a resolution to authorize the calling of an election for the levy and collection of a special tax in the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana specifically, the levy and collection of a tax not to exceed eighteen and twenty-hundredths mills on all property subject to taxation in the city for a period of ten years, beginning with the year two thousand twenty-four and ending in the year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand thirty-three, inclusive, in lieu of the not-to-exceed seven and forty-hundredths mills approved at an election held on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, with the estimated amount reasonably expected to be collected from the levy of the tax for one year being ten million four hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents for the purpose of paying salaries and benefits of fire department personnel for constructing, improving, equipping, maintaining, and/or operating fire department buildings and facilities, and for acquiring, maintaining, and operating fire department vehicles and equipment. The Kenner City Council will vote on this resolution at the council meeting to be held on Thursday, August third, two thousand twenty-three, beginning at five thirty P. M. at Heritage Hall, three oh three Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, seven thousand six two. The tentative date for this election is Saturday, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three." Item nineteen is unfinished business and/or motions to reconsider or remove from a table position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Dawn Monroe, please state your name and the district you live in, and you'll have three minutes, please.
Dawn Monroe, District One. Today, I'm here to find out how to obtain to start a small business in the city of Kenner. I started a journey five months ago to open up the Kenner Arts and Craft Market. It started five months ago. I started with Recreation Department, Ms. Bonnie. Everything Ms. Bonnie have asked me to present, I have presented. Legal department, code enforcement, each time, my application have been rejected. And then they tell me what I need to bring back in. I have done all of those things. I have showed the paper, I have my license, I have my insurance, but each time, I'm being rejected. So I just would like to know what more needs to be done. There are small businesses open up in Kenner every day, if not every month. I'm there, I'm supporting Kenner, whatever y'all do in Rivertown, I am there. But today, I spoke to those three departments, each department give me something else that was needed, that is already in my paperwork. So now, I feel that I'm having a problem, and I need someone to help me clean this problem up. Or at least, tell me what I need to do to be able to open this business. I also have a location, a private location, which is Advance Auto. I was told that they need to have it notarized that I can be on their property. I did that. I did the diagram. It's in District Two. They opened me up with Open Owens at Advance Auto. I can do it there. But for some reason, each time, my application is kicked out, and each time, I am paying for an application fee, which is ten dollars. I have done about five applications. I have submitted five, at least five, applications. And each time, as I stated, each department is saying something different, so I'm thinking the department is not on the same page.
Thank you for your comments. If you would like, I'll ask Councilman Schwarth to meet with you after the meeting, and maybe you all could exchange some information, and maybe his office can assist you in getting that finalized for you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to add some comments from the mayor's office regarding the applications that were put in for public gatherings, not a business license. We've received two requests for public gatherings. They go through a thorough vetting process to determine, do they qualify as a public gathering or regular business? Ms. Monroe has received an opinion from our city attorney's office that she would qualify as a regular business. In addition, every time the application has been submitted, the dates do not match up with the events, the information is incorrect every time, and we've asked her to address it. She did speak with my office today. I'm happy to provide any council member with what the city attorney's office has provided as a resource, and like anyone looking to open a business in the city of Kenner, we offer plenty of resources on our website. Our code enforcement department is happy to meet with anyone to determine what they need in order to start a small business, where they are properly zoned for that business, where can they perform that business. Also, to assist in interpreting the code, what is a public gathering? What is a regular standing business? Jedco also serves as a resource if someone's looking to start a small business, and they may need funding to do so, or just some business insight. I feel like we've been very cooperative with this process, but it does not qualify for a public gathering, which is why it has not come before this body.
Ms. Monroe, we'll have Councilman Schwarth reach out to you and try to help coordinate all that, dot the i's and do what needs to be done. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Newton. Mr. Al Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Road Drive, Fifth District, fifty-one years. Uh, I want to start out by expressing my appreciation to Mr. Arthur Tadella for taking the time to come here at the last council meeting and correct the misstatement I made concerning the Vietnam War. Uh, also, from one Vietnam veteran to another, I want to thank him for his service. But for Mr. Tadella to suggest that I owe an apology, I think is absurd. However, now it's Mr. Tadella who owes the apology to two and a half million Americans who served in that war, who served in Vietnam, and every branch of the military, regardless what uniform you wore, regardless what patch you had on your sleeve or you didn't have on your sleeve. We all fought that war together, and that's why we never lost the battle the whole time we was over there, when we was frequently up against insurmountable odds. And I challenge Mr. Tadella to debate me on the Vietnam War from the beginning to the end, anytime, anywhere, anyplace, as long as it's a public place and we on the record. Now, I want to refer to an article in Advocate on June twenty-fifth concerning what the announcement was tonight on the agenda. First of all, I will not even consider increasing property taxes in this city until you also put a referendum on the ballot to change the charter from the fire chief shall be appointed by the mayor to the fire chief shall be elected by a popular vote of the people. Because you can throw all the money you want at this problem, and we change mayors every eight years, maybe this man does mean well. Although the article did say that the fire chief was not made available by the administration for an interview, it should have been, he's the chief of that department. I don't think anything is ever going to change until the fire chief is accountable to the people, and not stop serving at the pleasure of the mayor. Now, I want to, in closing, on the Fourth of July, there was also something else that took place on the Fourth of July. The second President of the United States, John Adams, and the third President, Thomas Jefferson, both passed away on that very same day in eighteen twenty-six, fifty years after the Declaration of Independence. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Cardeta White? You have, please state the district you live in, and you have three minutes.
District Two, Cardeta White, seven oh two Webster Street. I'm coming on behalf of, I'm an educator in Jefferson Parish. I'm coming on behalf of Washington being closed, and for the parents that cannot and do not have a vehicle to take care of their kids if something happened, if them being put out of district, going to another school. I am a mother, my daughter graduated from Washington, I teach in Jefferson Parish. Children are coming from all over the district to my school, I'm not going to name it, I don't know if my principal would appreciate that, but parents are having a hard time to come pick their kids up when they're sick, when something happened to them, they can't get the phone, they can't leave their job, and we closed down a school where parents can walk to pick up their kids, that could come see about their kids who do not have vehicles, do not have money to catch a cab or to catch a bus, and they move our kids out of our district, send them to other schools, close our school down because they don't have enough kids. Well, they're not going to have enough kids. We're sending them to class here, we're sending them to support, and Washington, our grades went up, things was done that were supposed to be done, and they closed it down anyway. It doesn't matter what we thought as parents. I'm a parent first. I'm a grandmother, I'm an aunt, and I'm a citizen, and I do have the right, and we do have a right as people, to say what take place in our neighborhood. Everybody else run their neighborhood, and we can't run our neighborhood because it's already been done with our okay. Well, it's not okay. It's not okay, not to me. I serve a living God. I'm not worried about what man going to do to me, and who's going to fight my battles? God going to fight our battles. But nevertheless, right now here, we been closed down a school where kids' grades had gone up, to send them to somebody else's school out of district. What are you guys going to do about it? We elect each and every one of you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. White. Barbara Soniat? Please state your name and your district, and you have three minutes.
Barbara Soniat, District One. I'm sorry, what, did you need an address?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the Old Kenner Civic Association, Evelyn Evans, President, I'm addressing you also concerning the future land use of Washington Elementary School property located in the six hundred block of Clay and Webster Streets. The Jefferson Parish School Board has closed the school, and according to articles in The Times Picayune, Jefferson Parish School Board members have been talking, I guess that's the advocate, I'm sorry, have been talking with an unnamed municipal entity about possibly taking over the Washington Elementary School site. We are concerned that plans are being made without input from residents of Kenner. President Langley, the property is zoned RR one, single-family residential district. Article six, section six point five of the Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner states that this district shall provide for single-family development on smaller lots, together with such accessory uses and non-residential uses as are compatible with residential surroundings. The permitted uses are churches, schools, parks, and playgrounds. Washington School has been in this location for nearly ninety years, and has been a great asset to our community. We urge you to join us to oppose all applications to rezone the Washington School property. The future land use of this property must conform with the Unified Development Code adopted March seventeenth, twenty sixteen. We have sent a petition with signatures of Kenner residents who are concerned about the future plans for the Washington School property. As our representatives on the Kenner City Council, we are requesting your leadership and support to protect the residential integrity of our community. If you should have questions, I've... If you should have questions, and if I have more time left, can entertain those now. Otherwise, please do not hesitate to contact our president, Evelyn Evans, at five oh four nine oh five eight one three seven. Also, you're always welcome to attend OKCA monthly meetings on the third Tuesday of the month. Thank you, and we look forward to your support of our petition to adhere to the current visiting zoning restrictions on the Washington School property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soniat. Please, see if you'd like to stay there for a moment. Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes, I would like to go on the record as saying that I'm not familiar at all with this council or the planning department coming to me stating that they want to rezone Washington School. I was privy to find out that there was a petition that was going on. But as far as any vote or anybody coming to the council or coming to me in particular stating that they want a zoning change of Washington Elementary School, I have no information concerning that at all. And then I'm told that you all were just acting proactively. But I don't know how to address it because there is nothing that has come before me as your council representative stating that anybody asking for zoning change. So I have not heard that. And I'm going on the record of saying that I have heard nothing about a zoning change of Washington Elementary School.
Absolutely not. We're not saying that anyone has asked for zoning change. We just want to make you aware that any difference in the use of the property from what's currently being used, we are proactively asking you to not support changing the zoning there, if it should come before you. If it doesn't, no problem. But if it should, we're asking for your support.
Well, as your council representative, the only thing that I can assure you, if it comes before the board, I will address your civic association and let them know. But if I don't address it, I have no idea that anyone have approached us in doing a zoning change. I don't even know where it came from. I'm dishonest.
It's just thinking ahead, you know, once the, when you start thinking about selling a property, and what we've experienced in the past.
Excuse me, Ms. Soniat, I don't mean to cut you off. I shouldn't. But you all have each other's information?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a comment on this matter as well. I did receive a cover letter along with a petition. It has approximately twenty-five to thirty pages. And on those twenty-five to thirty pages, it looks like they range anywheres from five to probably thirteen signatures per page. So it's a healthy packet, a healthy petition, and it's well put together. And I admire that. You all have done a lot of work to put forward this issue, even though it's being proactive, apparently. And I, because I haven't heard any requests for zoning changes either. But I admire that. And it's important to know what's going on and what's possibly out there. And so thank you again for coming and expressing yourselves and putting all this hard work into this packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Greg Taft? Name and district? District Five.
Greg Taft, District Five and thirty-seven twenty West Laola Drive, Kenner. I've just got a couple of comments. One is about the article that was in the paper on January twenty-fifth. I just want to say there's going to be some confusion out there because in that article, it stated something to the fact that the mayor said there was a shortfall of six thousand dollars, and we're raising, and the coming up is actually changing the millage to a hundred and forty-five percent, which is basically tenth of ten million instead of six. So that's confusion. And the other thing is, I hope that there is a plan because of keeping what's in the general fund the same and not taking and playing a game of saying, I'm going to now take that money for something else because of this millage. And I'll go on record, I support the fire department. I want that to be known. I just want it to be done right. And I want to make sure that everybody understands where it's coming from because at a hundred and forty-five percent increase on the millage, a lot of people will not be able to afford it. And I got, and even people that can afford it is hurting because our economy right now is not the best economy to be in. I mean, we're having trouble going to the grocery store. We have trouble with the insurance, our homeowner's insurance, et cetera. I'm going to leave it at that. The other thing I want to bring up, and maybe y'all are privy to it or not, but there's been a lot of discussion on social media regarding our BMBs here in Kenner. Now, the council, the majority of the council that's on here now voted that we're not to have our BMBs. But people are saying they're fighting, they're talking to code, they're talking to people. Some people said they called the police department. And they don't feel they're getting addressed, and they keep seeing homes that are being rented from out-of-staters. Now, maybe, maybe what they're saying may not be right, but there's a bunch of them. But the point is, it doesn't look good from people looking at Kenner that Kenner can't even control their own rules. And that's what it boils down to. We have a rule that we do not have BMBs in Kenner. But yet, in many neighborhoods, Chateau is one. I've seen them in our District Five, where people have complained.
Thank you, Ms. Taft.
Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Brown? Thank you.
Hello, Ryan Nugent, fifty-four forty-four Erlanger Road in District Three. I'm usually up here to talk about lighting, but today, I'm really just here to voice my support for this special tax in support of the fire department personnel and its equipment. I don't have to tell anybody that nobody likes new taxes. And unfortunately, due to years of mismanagement and the neglect of key economic resources, the city of Kenner lacks the resources to support an alternative. It also goes without saying that our fire department personnel are embarrassingly underpaid and that a robust fire service is essential for maintaining Kenner's fire rating and keeping our already skyrocketing property insurance rates from going even higher, though I certainly agree with some of the concerns that have been expressed. My only other comment on the proposed terms of the millage is that given the untenable compensation situation within the Kenner Fire Department, I do wish that the terms dictated a minimum portion of the new millage that would be dedicated to personnel compensation specifically. However, if this is the resolution we have, I'm still happy to support it, and I do hope that my friends, neighbors, the council, and the citizens of the city of Kenner will join me in doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent. Mayor Glazer?
Yes, and we're meeting with the fire administration and firefighters association. We'll have all that laid out for the August third meeting to kind of, sort of, the public is very educated on if it passes, where the money is going. If it passes, we're still going to, still going into the general fund because it's still not enough. So we'll have, we'll have a lot of information. We've met with some, with the council already to kind of give them a heads up that, speaking with the firefighters association and the administration, that they were in favor of seeking a millage. And we'll put it to a voter of the people if it passes this, you know, this body. And they'll have a lot of information on, on what changes would be and what the money would be used for.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing no other persons, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Chief, hold on there.
I just wanted to give everyone a chance to speak before I spoke on this.
I'm sorry, sir. You're not on the list, and you, no one has called nine-one-one? Could you have him removed, please? Go ahead, Chief, in case my house catches on fire tonight.
We're still coming. We're still coming, man.
Oh, the whole team's here.
That's right. I want the public and you guys realizing we met with, with all of you, all of the council and the administration and the association on this subject. And our funding currently at seven point four mils, you've heard Councilman Empostal to say at every meeting that Kenner pays less than overall millage than every other area of Jefferson Parish pays for fire protection alone. Collects seven point four mils. Even during that increase, we still are one of the lowest. The only grant, the fee will be less than us. We're below every other municipality in the parish in terms of millage collection. And Mr. Taft, just a bit of correction, and you're right. It's a hundred and forty-five percent increase. But we currently collect four million with the seven mils. The total that the eighteen brings us to is ten mil, which is almost a hundred and fifty percent more, and that's where that number comes from. These guy, my administration, we've been working diligently with the assessor as well as firefighters and everyone else to make certain we present to the public exactly where this funding is going and what we're using the fund. And we will still be heavily dependent upon the general fund to staff the department and equip and to train the department. So with it.
The only comments I have to say is that, please pay attention, really pay attention, because we really did our homework. We really put the numbers together. We know where we want to put the money. We know what we need to do with the money. This isn't about today. This is about the resurrection and the saving of this department for years to come. We only get ten years of this money, and then ten years from now, we have to figure out what we're going to do it again. But the facts are going to be what dictates and makes you realize where we are. There's no frills to this millage. This is a necessity. This is what we need to sustain life for the next ten years for this department and the leaders of this department, for the firemen that are there. Most of us, most of us here are pretty close to retirement. I'm in all the way. We're going to work as hard as we have to, but it's for those guys who are there for the most. And it's for the citizens of Kenner. The services that we provide are, I mean, you really need to pay attention as we start our campaign to explain to you what we provide and what we're going to provide for you and what we have been providing, and what it costs to keep these services going.
Thank you.
Assistant Chief Terry Lee, thirty-three years, Kenner Fire. I want to state just some facts, small facts, that maybe the public doesn't know that could go a long way in people thinking where, what we're looking for and why we're looking for it. Like I said, I've been on thirty-three years, and in that time, we average two thousand or three thousand calls a year. That's, in thirty years, it's ninety thousand times that fire truck has left a fire station. That's a truck moving. That's concrete that gets rolled on. That's, in them thirty-three years, somebody's been in them firehouses twenty-four seven for the citizens of Kenner. So you got, those stations are still in place. The only one new since I got hired is Station Thirty-six, got relocated from Worth Street to where it's at now. The same money we collected, millage-wise, when I got hired thirty-three years ago, is the same now. So I can't stress to you enough, we've been robbing Peter to pay Paul, robbing Peter to pay Paul, and moving money here and there. This money, this millage, all it's going to do is, it's going to get us current to what we can afford to do now. This is no extravagance. This is no extras. Fire trucks cost a lot more than thirty years ago. Training costs more than thirty years ago. Personnel costs more than thirty years ago. Insurance costs more than thirty years ago. Health insurance costs more than thirty years ago. So I plead with you, understand that this is not a large amount of money that we're asking for. And the chief has told y'all, we're still going to be relatively low compared to all the East Bank and West Bank fire departments. But thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Thanks for your comments and your service. I have a motion by Councilman Wilmot, seconded by Councilwoman McKinney, to adjourn.